Good evening, we're going to call a order. Voting meeting for the Board of School Directors for Daniel Boone Area School District. Tonight is Monday, November 25th, 7:30 PM Eastern Time. We will start with our pledge allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, indivisible, and liberate and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Wolf, please.
He's here. He was back here.
Yes, Mr. Scott, I will continue to roll down. Then, Mr. President. Thank you.
And Ms. Albright? Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Strobel?
Here.
Mr. Beast Guy? Here. Mr. Wolf, here. And Mr. Rathke?
Here.
Ms. Olson?
Here.
Mr. Jeff Scott?
Here.
Pete President?
All right. Procedures for public participation. AR Listonian side cover the agenda. If you'd like to address the Board, simply come up to your microphone, state your name and address. You have three minutes to address the Board.
Will the amended, there's seven Presidents here.
Moment of silence for Eric.
It's math. We do have one agenda edit. Item 11A is being removed from the agenda. We will save that discussion for the new Board.
I do have one agenda edit also. We're, item 11A was removed. What was, I think, a Daniel Boone Area, so proposal for bids, that's A. And we're adding B, a motion to approve an annual maintenance contract with I-2 security systems as recommended by the Facilities Committee for $6,600.
Can you give me that slower?
The motion to approve the annual maintenance contract with I-2, I-2 security systems.
Uh, I-2?
I-2, yes.
Security systems?
The amount of $6,600. And it's as recommended by the Facilities Committee. But it's just technically at 11A since 11B is actually saying we're canceling the bill. So 11B, we need to be there.
I have a question. Were any dues actually received?
No.
No vigilance received?
Nope.
No vigilance received, there's no action required to be taken?
So really it's just 11A, the active security, is what, is what, on our 11A?
Right, and B can be removed and just as an information, right, and then no vigilance received?
So that'll be item 11A.
So 11A is, 11A is a motion?
An edit, okay. Any other edits by Board members? All right.
Yeah. We're done with the edits?
Yeah.
Okay. What I'd like to do is recognize three of our Board members who will no longer be with us after the first Monday of November, and thank them for their years of service. We have some, something to show our support for their years of service on the Board. Mr. Mike Wolf has served on the Board. This is my information, so if it's incorrect, please feel free to correct me. From December of 2012 through this December of 2019, for a total of seven years?
That's 2011.
2011, okay, a total of eight years, Anne. Mr. Rathke? From 2013 through 2019, for a total of six years?
Correct.
And Mr. Scott, total of four years, from 2015 through 2019. So that's 18 years of service to the District, many hours of volunteer time. And the District would like to recognize him for that year, those years of service. So if I could have the three to come out front, we're going to get pictures, and I'm going to give you a glass bowl here.
Oh, a good scotch. Picture.
I'll take Eric.
You can come over here.
No, no, I'll stand.
You want to get over here?
You guys sit close together like we're each other.
Everybody look that way once, and everybody look this way once. Is everybody smiling?
No, just use your regular face.
Jeff, regular face.
Excellent.
All right, now look this way. Newspaper.
All right, thank you very much. Any presentation by public on any agenda items? Seeing none. Do we have a motion for consent items 7A through 7R?
So moved.
Second by Mr. Strobel.
Second.
The second by Mr. Strobel.
Again.
The record show. Any more discussion on items 7A through 7R?
I don't want to disappoint, so.
I, I wasn't even prepared.
I'm hoping somebody will stick up the mantle of speaking outward. So, I mean, I mentioned in the last meeting, you know, I went back and forth about the budget, and I do feel that since I am not here, that I don't want to impede any new Board, anything they can do. I think if I was staying on the Board, I would have adamantly suggested that we keep within the Act, Act One, because I think 3.4% is a big increase. But since I will not be here, I don't, I don't think it's right, you know, put restriction on new Board. Has been that case in the past, so. But I would just encourage the current Board members that are staying to, you know, keep thinking that Act One, actually, I would prefer it to be lower, I think. Well, you all, you all have a part in my mindset. I think, I think, you know, we should try to, try to steer the bill as best we can, so. Thank you.
My question, it's item number I. It says that the Plenary Budget is slated, it's going to be advertised. It doesn't say what that is. I mean, we've talked about it, it was covered in the report.
Well, the Plenary Budget would be on the PD form that you're requiring.
2028, and it has to be advertised, and on the 2028 budget, or not. And this just gives me, you know, that I have enough time in the Finance Committee. So I'm going to put it in exactly how they presented it, in the budget, the Finance Committee we had the other day, with no changes.
That's what I thought, and it's like, yes.
So does the motion need to be more specific?
Yeah, as presented to the Finance Committee. We have a friendly amendment on that. Mr. Scott, you want the friendly amendment?
I just want to make sure that what I understand is, this is every year we propose, when we need to open it, okay? So even if you guys are staying, it still be a disaster.
Well, there's two, two options. You can take this type of approach, which leaves everything wide open, and that requires you to advertise and approve a Plenary Budget, the post, a Plenary. The alternative would be to adopt a resolution agreeing, committing to stay within the Act One index for the District, and you don't have to approve the Plenary Budget now, or in January, or February. You would have to approve your proposed final, and final by June 3rd, May 3rd, and June 3rd. So this, as Mr. Rathke noted, this approach keeps all options now.
Of course, it's a Plenary Budget, right?
Correct, and yeah, it does have, you know, more information out soon.
I think, just to be clear, so, all Mr. Rathke is saying is that all, typically, letting ourselves have the freedom of all options is not nearly this high, and this year it will be, it's much higher.
If I extend what I probably would argue to keep it within only Act One, and not have the one possible exception of our special, special needs, which is the other one that's probably going to be at level two to the District. I, I just think 3.4% would have been enough to have an increase to have on the table to begin with, but. But again, I, you know, again, obviously, as I've been on the Board, we've, we've had the flexibility, so I didn't want to stand in the way of.
Mr. Miller, do you have another question?
Does anyone wish to have that item removed from the consent?
Mr. Strobel? Mr. Strobel, do you agree to that friendly amendment that we did add, as recommended by the Finance Committee?
Yes, or?
Consent of items 7A through 7R will be announced to the Executive unless I hear objection? Hearing none. Consent of items 7A through 7R are adopted.
All right. Personnel, consent items 8A and 8B.
Make a motion for consent items 8A through 8B.
You have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
Consent of items 7A, I mean, 8A through 8B will be adopted unanimously unless I hear objection? Hearing none. Consent of items 8A through 8B are adopted.
Oh, and before I get into item nine, personnel, I do have to put on record that we are having a brief executive session to discuss.
Potential settlement.
Potential settlement.
Agreement.
Which I didn't mention earlier, it wasn't on the agenda. Item nine, personnel. Items 9A through 9C, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Strobel pointed out a question. Is it termination? 8B, A1?
Yes, I can see, that, that was a situation where there was multiple attempts to contact the individuals that were not returned. So, it's a job abandonment, yeah.
I assume we're going to be replacing?
Yes.
All right. Any further questions on personnel? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Number, right in 10, old business. Item A is a motion to approve minutes. Do we have a motion?
So vote.
Second? Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Beast Guy. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. And then, item 11, new business as amended. The item A, a motion to approve the annual maintenance contract for I-2 security systems in the amount of $6,600, as recommended by the Facilities Committee. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion on 11N?
This is just, yeah, you want to explain what it is?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I wasn't.
Strobel?
My default, Mr. Leck.
You're in the chair.
Regarding the keepoffs, regarding the keepoffs, I'm not familiar with any, we went over it and the keepoff, well, the processes, so.
Yeah.
That'd be great, yeah.
The keepoff, the cameras.
They were involved with any of these.
And everything, they had to go, I-2 had to go into our system. Right now, we have no service agreement with them, and we have a problem with clubs at this building that was discovered, we've never had a service agreement with any of the cameras, or any of the club systems that we have at any of the buildings. And with bigger staff coming in, not understanding enough of the system, we don't want to avoid any warranties or anything, I would rather have a service agreement where they come out immediately instead of five days. We're still waiting, what, two weeks for the club thing to be fixed in this building?
Yes.
So if we have a camera go down, I think it's very imperative that we have these people come out. So I asked them to jump in, they jumped into the network, they found all of our equipment, and they gave us the price of the $6,600 for a year service agreement, which will be of bigger staff enough time to learn the system and understand it, and then figure out next year whether we actually need it, after he learns it.
So is the service agreement from, like, December 1, next to November 30?
As soon as it's signed, we were going to do December 1, yes.
And they were the ones that did the install of all that equipment in the first place?
All the equipment, for like, even the safety, the safety grant team, they gave us $25,000, and they gave us another $24,900 at the high school, or the, I mean, I can't even say, primary center. And they did all that, so, they'd be off all of that.
So is, so is that for all six buildings available, or?
All cameras, all cameras, all club entrance on any building that we own.
Okay.
Any other questions by the Board?
No.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. And any presentations by public on any issues? Seeing none, go on, motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry.
As mine, my last, I was actually, a couple for Kathy, and a couple of those, I was looking through all the bills, the budgets, and all that fun stuff that came out. So, I mean, just bringing it to Board's attention, we still have active money under the Green Team. With the Green Team's long existence, do they actually do anything? That was our team, they worked algae and energy years ago, what's that? Four, four years ago?
Yeah, they did well.
But there's, there's one thing in the account, is the Green Team, there's still a Green Team. Okay, so we should probably change the name from Green Team to?
No, no, the Green Team.
No, Green Team is, so that is now, okay, to make sure it was still, still functioning, okay. I mentioned this last year, I don't know, I apologize, I remember the, I know we had a discussion about the middle school play, and I think now there's over $50,000 sitting in their account. I, I know it, I know it's a very successful play, and they do raise a lot of money, and I know that they spend money, but probably that amount is more than, I can't remember what it costs to do the production and everything else. But I'm wondering if that, if there is considerable, considerable excess there in that sum of money, could, are there any upgrades that middle school auditorium needs to help, you know, make the place better, and so if that sum of money can go back into making the productions at, at the entire auditorium better?
I, just as a side note, that's a student activity. The funds are going to be used for students, where regulations and guidelines for students.
So, I mean, here's, here's an interesting question, and so, I mean, do your vote committee candidates, if they want to do, want to do a, that's all money out to campus for students?
It has to be a petition that way.
So.
And it has to follow the guidelines.
So if, if, if the middle school wants, if that club wants to invest in the auditorium to help enhance their production, that, that's doable, right?
If all of the guidelines, if the class has the guidelines, then.
Yeah, I wasn't saying take the money, I was saying try and reinvest it.
They definitely have to make their vote, do whatever they do to donate that money.
But I think they would vote to improve that school.
Well, they are voting for future high schools.
That is true, that is true, so, that's potential, I know the public test will need it more than, than the middle school.
Do they use the money for next year's production if that were the current?
They, they do, so, so that money will go into, into next year's production. I just don't think it's going to cost $50,000 to do a, to do a full, full production. So, and then, so this is, this is all, now Skyward, right, that, that one, okay. So, you know, just looking over, like, the, the expense area, so, just as a question, so we're looking at, like, where was it, I think it was, it was technology support services. So they're already for the year, almost used their entire budget. So, I mean, is that something that we, that we see, hey, this points out that we're exceeding a, you know, a budget in the area, we're close to using that budget for the year, why is that? Is it, is that?
Typically, most of your budgets, like even your school budgets, the spending is done beginning of school. So by December, a lot of your budgets are spent, you shouldn't be, I'm going to cut, where I cut it off is when I'm going on tax day, April 15th, and tell them they're no longer on a lot of expenses for necessity, maybe even a little bit sooner than that. But typically, when you're dealing with like, technology services, now, I don't know which report you're looking at, I can't see from here, but, all right, so.
This is something from the forecast report, they talked about one, you know, it'd be good to know what the actual forecast would be spent.
Yeah, and so, you know.
The revised budget is usually, all right. The other thing that was presented with the people that were, like, the department heads that are doing their budget this year, is that, remember, I always tell you to look at the revised budget line, because the way things have been budgeted in the past, and kind of fix everything that's been budgeted, they've been told that there's not going to be as many budget transfers either. So I've always told you to look at the revised budget as where they're actually going, and what they're looking at, what they're trying, what they're going to be spending. And that technology support services, that was one item, that was actually technological, one of the, either the Skyward, or one of the other programs that we use, it's already paid for at the beginning, so, yeah, it's 100%.
So that, that wasn't an ongoing?
No, it's not an ongoing, you're not going to see any more expenses there, that's done.
But this is, obviously, a tool that, if something's getting out of whack, you can use it.
You're going to see it, you're going to see it right away.
Well, I can see about $30,000 in transfers going, right?
Yeah, you got, October 1st is the first day that I'm allowed to do transfer, that will, so every transfer that's needed to be done, since you're on the line. Now, we do have, you know, technology, different things happen after the first year that weren't budgeted the way that was budgeted.
And then, under, under revenue, so where, where would, like, money coming in from our leases fall, like, where the rock?
In the $600, that's local, so it's down, down your rental, no?
So paid, well, that was like, all the taxes that were coming in?
This lady's revenue, it's down here, and this lady's revenue section's, rental's right here.
And I guess my last, I don't, yeah, I couldn't figure this out, but I was looking at all the funds, student funds, and I'm assuming that, again, the beginning credit balance, and then I was trying to figure out adding in withdrawals, or taking out the withdrawals and then adding deposits, never figured, never, the, the down was never added up. I was like, what the heck am I doing wrong here?
Uh, this is the beginning of the ending balance, it's wrong.
Was it, something, something out the other back?
I had to read the report, because based on our policy, you all need to see the report with a beginning balance in the fund. You need to see some specifically called withdrawals, and a specifically called deposits, and then an ending balance, but it looks like the beginning and the ending balance are identical, so where that started, when I just go change the report, and read like that properly. The beginning balance is actually the ending balance.
Yeah. Okay, all right, got it, all right. Now, now it makes sense, okay. I knew that's something I was looking at, but.
You're getting the ending balance, you're just not getting the beginning.
Got it, all right, that was it. Well, I just wanted to say, it's been a, been a pleasure, a learning experience, and I want to thank all the remaining Board members for your service, and I love you guys so much. You know, I think we're, we've started to bring, I think we all agree, we've been improving the District, I think it's going to continue doing so, and I think as we've seen something fine in the moment, so we can bring some of that savings back in to restore some of the stuff that we've lost over the years, and I trust you guys, or gals, will need to do so, and just remember my motto, have a good day. So, but thank you all for saying who are saying, and if I don't, I won't make any promises to be your case, but certainly if you have any questions, I'm always available to answer whatever I can, so, thank you.
Similarly, seems like eight years has gone by pretty, pretty quickly, and, you know, the, the day I started was also the big media fury that was over at Berthrow, because Connor had, was the high school student that became, went on the school board, so there's national media and all that fiasco, and it seemed like forever since that, that occurred, but, you know, I started on the Board as a one-issue cabinet, and I was here to make sure that the elementary ban wasn't cut from our, for our programs, because that was a discussion topic, so that was my singular focus, and I always, it seemed like I always found a reason to, to come back. I got, I have to say, your work was very interesting, and I learned a lot, and I think that's the thing I, I'll miss most of, of the experience that I have, and the information that Mr. Early and Mr. McKnight have relayed multiple times over many years to new Board members, so I appreciate your patience in, in explaining it to. I appreciate your patience and explaining it to, and in layman's terms to us non-educators, and I do appreciate that, and I'd also say, Mr. Mikowski, who's not here, that was prob, Mr. Mikowski's discipline was probably the thing I learned the most, to appreciate, you know, special education, and how doing it well is beneficial, beneficial to not only students, but the district financially, because doing it badly, which is what was happening before, was very costly. But I learned a lot, and I've given this old, some, a handout that Shelley had made for me, kind of a special education 101, I think it's a really good read, if you want to indulge yourself in it, after she's completed, probably, she's probably read it already. Ms. Weber, who taught me a little bit about scheduling and how intricate that it is, and Mr. Subers, you know, for your years of service too, I appreciate some of the suggestions and comments that you've made over the years, to help out with some things we're working on. And again, I do want to wish Brett and his team the best of luck. As Mr. Raffka, I hope not to be here and do something else on a Monday night, but again, if there would be something that would come up, and I'm just, I have many conversations, you know, you'll have my phone number, pick it up, and I know, all I answer most likely. So, didn't want to wish all the survey board members the best of luck, and, you know, thank you for your service, and, you know, it seems that, you know, the survey board, which you're not getting paid, doesn't seem very lucrative, and maybe that's...
No, now, now, now.
Yeah, you know, maybe, yes. But barring that, I did want to, again, I wanted to say, you know, thank you for your service and your camaraderie.
You're next?
Yeah.
All right, before Mr. Scott closes us out, I just wanted to say that all three of you, we've really appreciated your, your educating, but I, for one, speaking for the less experienced members of the board. I know before I was a board member, when I sat out in the audience, especially miserable Mr. Raffka, were, answered my endless questions and rankings, and my offering corrections to documents that we have on file for the school, and really helped me understand some of the processes to go through, if you wanted to have your voice heard, and I did appreciate their input, and so, just remember that, you know, we love to have you come and visit, and watch us, watch us without you, but if you want to take the opportunity to change your phone numbers, because we still have lawyer numbers asking questions, and thanks a lot, guys.
Thanks. Yeah, I'll make this quick, but I really enjoyed working with each of you, it's been an honor to be part of the school board, and I think it's kind of a, more of a service than it is an elected position. So, you know, thank you for all that you do for the district and the community and the kids. Really learned a lot from the administration, you know, talking with all the meaning and understanding in the ins and outs of the school district, working with Mr. Early, you know, during the policy committees, and while they weren't glamorous, there was a lot of stuff that we discussed over the year or so that I was involved in that, and that was really eye-opening. You know, the, talking to the administration about special education, understanding the air workings, you know, between the buildings and the dynamics that exist between the different levels of the school, and, you know, the commitment to educating the kids, so different from, you know, K to two, all the way through up into the high school. And then, lastly, the, just the finances, and all the things that have to happen behind the scenes, what it costs and what it takes to keep a school district running and operating, I don't think anybody in the public eye has any appreciation for it. And, you know, this job is really a lot harder than anybody who's never done it would ever, would ever know, so I'll thank you now for your many years on the board, and wish you well.
Talking to Uber, before I forget, since I won't, the IU, you should ask them, they just put out a copy of Act, Act 11, across the state, they kind of consolidated all the state mandates that are, did you see that yet? So, they consolidated all the state mandates that were required to do.
It's only 11 pages.
And it really kind of, I mean, they're trying to put the focus to tell the state legislature, hey, this is everything that you are mandating us to do, and not giving us the money to do with, is the other piece they're gonna kind of try to put into play. The money piece isn't there yet, but it's eye-opening, just to see everything that the state requires the districts to do.
Yeah, it's a third version, and we're...
They need copies passed out to the members, they might be...
So, lastly, I just want to thank also Mr. Subers, I think he's done a really nice job for us, and I enjoy giving him a hard time when we have our meetings with my childish lawyer jokes. And I also want to thank Mrs. Haynes for all the work she's done over the last year and a half to keep us on board and get us through budget and negotiations, and thank you for that. And I think, I think that's it. It's been a ride. Good luck to all you guys.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.